It's four thirty and time to call this meeting of the Butler Community College Board of Trustees to order. Something a little new tonight, we're being recorded. It's kind of, I guess, a test process for the possibility of, besides archiving, maybe streaming. You'll see microphones around and it'll be a new adventure for us. A slight amendment to the agenda, and that's the first item of, on the agenda, is the approval of the agenda. The executive session has become a time certain for five o'clock. If we get to that point quicker, we will, but council needs to move on to other business this evening, so we'll stop at five if we're not there yet and do that executive session. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Who's seconded to approve the agenda? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is recognitions.
Yes. I'm just gonna stand up here so I don't have my back to people as I speak, but want to take some time to recognize our outgoing, not our old trustees, our outgoing trustees. We had that little discussion before the meeting started, and talk some about their commitment to this college and the things that have happened under their leadership while they've been on the board. Ron and Greg's first meeting was July tenth, two thousand and seven, so they've served three terms on the board, twelve years, and a lot can happen in a twelve-year timeframe. Their, one of their first meetings, I think it was a September meeting, Laura went back, and so thank you to Laura for digging out a lot of this stuff for me. I didn't do it myself. But one of the very first things that you folks helped approve was the construction contract for the 5,000 building, the student union renovation in that building in Andover, was one of the very first things that you did. And of course, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, during the height of the recession, you know, tons of folks coming back to school, and so it was obviously a really needed project. Also, that fall, there was conversation that started about building this building, and also building the stadium. Those conversations were starting to kind of happen concurrently, but with different groups of people. The stadium, obviously, was a partnership between the college and the community and the school district. The bulk of that twelve million dollar project was all privately fundraised. The college raised six million of that, the school district contributed three, and the city contributed three. And about the same time, there were conversations then as well about building this building. Prior to that, the administration was in, you know, a small building across the campus, and we didn't have a large meeting room space, except in the union, well, it wasn't large, but we had meeting room space in the union, so this building became, started to become a reality as well. And the bulk of the funds for this building were also privately fundraised from across the county and the state, and actually the nation, from Butler donors and Butler supporters. In January of two thousand and nine, that's when the ag facility project was initiated and expanded, and that building was updated. That same spring, the championship training, Champions Training Center, the second phase of the Champions Training Center was initiated. A lot of that funding, again, came from private donors. Raymond and Betty Chris's name is on the front of that building, and you know, they're wonderful, we're wonderful community supporters. Hubbard, the Hubbard Foundation, R.D. Hubbard and his wife contributed some dollars to that project, so you folks were involved in that as well. In October of two thousand and ten, that was the timeframe when the trustees made the decision that our public safety folks or our law enforcement people needed to be certified law enforcement, need to be a certified law enforcement agency. And that's when you made the decision to start to send those folks through the law enforcement academy, so that they were certified law enforcement officers, and that's what we have, what we have now, which has been a great benefit. Gaining that certification as a law enforcement agency also granted the college the opportunity to receive some grant funding, as well as work more closely with the city law enforcement agencies and the county law enforcement agencies. Also, in two thousand and ten, and I don't know the date exactly, but that's when the first early college academy was established, the Health Science Academy was established in Rose Hill. Seven students, and now today, we have eleven different academies. Last spring, we had seventy high school seniors graduate with their associate's degrees from one of our academies. The year before, I think we had seventy-seven. And it's a unique model across the state, and one that's not replicated anywhere, the way that we do it. And so, you know, again, under your leadership, and folks around here tell the story that you'd applied for a Title III grant, I think, Lori, is that correct, to start that? And didn't receive a Title III grant, but Jackie said, "We're doing it anyway." So she sent, you know...
It wasn't Title III, it was a different grant.
A different grant, but some sort of grant.
Initially, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So send everybody off to make it happen anyway, even though the grant funding didn't come through. And so, Rose Hill School District's been a tremendous partner from the beginning of that. The fire science learning facility, that partnership with the city, was solidified in two thousand and twelve, and that's been a great partnership for residential fire science program for students to live onsite. I think there's space for eight students to live over there, and many more in class, but after they finish firefighter one, then they can, they can go with the city of El Reydo on fire calls. And so, again, a great example of partnership. And I don't remember exactly the date now when we built the fire science, the training tower over there, but you folks were involved in that, so that's been a few years ago. Two thousand and thirteen, in July, is when you hired me, so I'm happy about that. And Ron, and I remember specifically, Ron was my tour guide that one, that first day, I think, I was on campus, and so he turned me around this campus and took me over to Andover, and so I have great memories of being here to interview and get acquainted with folks. June tenth, two thousand and fourteen, was Ken's first meeting. Did you remember that?
Yes.
Okay. And that was, that was, that meeting was the meeting that the board decided that we needed to approve the renovations to the student union here on campus, to update that building, to try and expand some space in the kitchen area, to make it more functional and open and student-friendly. And if you remember that project, you know, we cleaned things out two days after commencement and, or the day after commencement, they started, and on Tuesday, the whole back wall was opened up, and they were hauling stuff out with skid loaders, and by August, first part of August, it was ready to go for students. So that was a crazy summer project, but it was, it was fun. July, or January two thousand and fifteen, was when we gave the approval, when you folks gave the approval to upgrade and add the anatomy and physiology labs in Andover, because we had a tremendous need in that building for additional lab space. July two thousand and fifteen was Eileen's first meeting, sorry that she can't be here tonight, but she joined the board in two thousand and fifteen then. And November of two thousand and sixteen was when we got our first notice from the Andover School District that we were going to have to vacate that space, and that they were going to be, you know, building through their lawn project and all of that. Significant policy change that you were all involved in, in two thousand and seventeen in March, was to address the state's change in conceal and carry law. And we spent a lot of time that spring preparing for that, and communicating with people, and getting ready to address that change in state law, so that our college was in compliance. During the fall of two thousand and seventeen, we started our conversations about our master facilities plan and deferred maintenance plan, which was approved that following February. December last year, well, no, it'd be in eighteen, so now it's been a little bit longer ago than that. That's when we approved the Culinary Arts Academy in Augusta, at Augusta High School, and got that launched. March two thousand and nineteen, we had a report on the board agenda about the savings for students with the initiation of open educational resources that our faculty had developed, and at that point in time, we'd saved our students a quarter of a million dollars already in textbook costs because of the use of OERs. And then, in April last year, was when we approved the construction bid, or you approved the construction bid for the renovation project in Andover at the 5,000 building. And that, of course, is still ongoing, but necessitated because of the change with Andover High School and the need to get out of that space that we've been in, in Andover High School for thirty years, however long it had been, so. And then, last spring, Ron and his wife started the trustee scholarship, which was a nice addition to the scholarship offerings through the foundation. And mixed in with all of this, of course, only one meeting a month, tremendous pay that you've received the whole time that you've been on the board. Just saying, for all you new trustees, there's a lot of anticipation about the money you're gonna make doing this. Involved in strategic planning and budget oversight and helping us build budgets. You know, the math redesign has taken place under your leadership through academics. The infusion of accelerated learning, where we pair developmental English classes with the college bearing, or college credit-bearing English classes, so that students can progress through those kind of remedial levels at a quicker pace and at a more successful pace. Approval, over time, of the college mission and vision and goals. First commencement last May outside, and so there've been a lot of things that have happened under your leadership and under your direction. And it all happened because of your commitment to this college and your vision and commitment to students and their success, and understanding that we have a tremendous opportunity every single day to change the lives of our students. And so, you certainly have been a great support to me, and your leadership has been critical to the, to changing this college over the years that you've served, whether it's been twelve years or whether it's been a couple of years. But we all have appreciated that leadership and guidance, good counsel, not always in agreement by any means, but always with a focus on how we move this institution forward and what's best for our students. And so, I wanna say, for myself personally, thank you for your time and your commitment. It's been invaluable to me and for our college, the same thing. You folks have been tremendous leaders and so instrumental in the work that we do day in and day out. And even though you're a little bit removed from the classroom and those kinds of things, your work touches our students' lives probably more than you really realize. So I would say thank you for that, and we got a couple of gifts for you, too. I'll pass those out. I guess, according to Jackie, as has been the tradition, for the folks that were on the board when the stadium got built, you are the recipient of a picture. It's the picture that was taken for the first football game, the panoramic picture of the stadium, the stadium pole, and I guess, you know, Jackie indicated that was sort of tradition for the original board members that heard those discussions, so thank you for that. And Ken, you don't get a picture, but you hopefully get a nice remembrance of good time on our board, so thank you very much. I appreciate it. Oh, quick picture? Yep, okay. Where do you want us? Just right there? Okay. Thank you so much. Proud of that. Pictures, pictures. No.
Ken or Ron, do you have comments, or?
Yeah, I appreciate the good words. It's been a privilege to be able to serve these twelve years, and...
Yeah, I echo that. This is, doesn't seem like it's been twelve years. It seemed like it was yesterday, but thank you for the thoughts and comments. So next, we're going to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I do wanna say that I've enjoyed the five and a half years on the board. We've been approached with a lot of decisions that weren't always favorable, the decisions we had to make in order to support the students and the residents of Butler County. And sometimes it's not easy, but you have to do what's right, so I appreciate all your support.
Well said. So now, I would invite the newly-elected trustees, Forrest Rhodes, Mary Martha Good, Julie Winslow, and Shelby Smith, to meet me over here by the flag, and we will, as we're in the meeting...
I do. If we'll have a square meeting.
I could give him, you know how to take one and pass it down.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Could've done that, probably. So I'll let you all kind of join me here, and is this a good picture way? Camera, are you all right there? All right. So if you would all raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly affirm...
I do solemnly affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of trustee Butler County Community College.
And faithfully discharge the duties of trustee Butler County Community College.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, each and welcome.
I think, did you get a picture, Adrian?
Yep.
Okay, all right. We're gonna rearrange here just a little bit.
So I'm handing the gavel to Vice Chairman Lance Lethenberg, who will conduct the rest of the meeting, of the meeting until we elect a new chairman.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And outgoing trustees are certainly welcome to stay and listen, if you'd like. I know there's some interest possibly in participating in any of that sessions. Yeah. Both new trustees, get comfortable, please.
New trustees, go ahead and assume the position.
Oris.
There you go.
Sit where your name is. Oh, I bet we've got some more back here. And here's the theme one. Do you have one? I should add, please.
Sixty-eight emission.
Yeah, if anybody needs...
Very far, though, let's get you. Which kind of...
I wanna echo Dr. Croll's thank you to the departing trustees for their time and service and everything. As I came on the board a couple of years ago, it's been very informative to be able to learn from them and their experiences on the board, so. And welcome to the new trustees as well, so. That being said, typically, the vice chair will step in and assume the role as chairperson, and after some discussions with Dr. Croll and just some personal schedules and kids' schedules for this upcoming year, I'm gonna forego that, would love to serve as vice chair again for the year if the board wants me to. But, so that being said, would open up the floor for nominations for chairperson for the upcoming year.
I'd like to nominate Jim How as the chairperson.
I saw it.
Are there any other conversation at all? It's been moved and seconded to approve, Jim? Is there any other nominations?
I'm with nomination, please.
I'm with my nominating Mr. Smith, that he'd like to be a...
Not the chair.
Not the chair, well, he could take a lot of guts.
Okay.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to nominate Jim How as the chairperson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. How, you are chairperson.
I didn't even get to object.
You've done this before. Okay.
So I will turn that over to you, I believe, now, correct?
And why don't, if Jim's coming up here, why don't you go sit? Do you wanna go sit over at his spot, and that way, we've got new trustees on each and existing trustees in between to help answer questions? Would that work, okay? Mary Martha?
Oh, yes, I see.
Is that okay? See what I'm saying?
I do. So now you're coming back over your man's...
Yep. So hey, that lead went along.
Okay.
Sorry for the switch. That's kind of what makes sense, I think, to...
Yes.
Put the existing ones in the, oh, take Jim's.
Watch out, I got a big hammer here.
So you get to know him. So if you need the nominations for vice chair, that's the next thing out.
Do I have any nominations for vice chair?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Lance Lethenberg for vice chair.
Any other nominations? I'll second that nomination. Now, we have, first, we have nomination, nobody else? Sure, nobody else wants in? Okay.
Pardon? No, I actually...
Oh, no.
Oh, I think if you live out of town, you have mine. Maybe that'll help.
Okay, well, we've, no other nominations there, do I have a, take a vote, I guess? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Lance, you are vice chair.
Congratulations.
Do I have a nominate, any nominations for Secretary Treasurer?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Deb Law.
Any other nominations?
I second Deb Law's nomination.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Doug? Secretary Treasurer?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think we have college, our legal counsel folks here, and so maybe this is a good spot to...
To go into executive session.
Yeah, to go to executive session, and we will finish the committee, that's okay. And that way, we're respectful of the time today and what's that they have, that's all right.
Fine. Do I have a motion to go into executive session, not exceed thirty minutes for consultation with legal counsel? So moved.
Second.
Okay, we're going to executive session.
Yeah.
Move back to the election of board officer's appointments for committees to be issued.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. I think with the committee appointments, I mean, they don't necessarily, I don't think that they actually take votes. I think it's just, you know, sort of discussion, and people sort of, you know, volunteer, and so those don't take formal motions to appoint people to committees.
So we just have an open discussion about those positions, then?
Yeah, the KECT representative, again, and the alternate, would attend quarterly meetings that are different places around the state, Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, and, you know, every once in a while, there are things that the trustee representative needs to vote on, but it's really kind of just to engage with other presidents and trustees around the state and stay abreast of legislative issues and things that impact the community, community colleges. It's our overarching association, so it's, again, kind of four meetings a year that would require you to be someplace other than usually here in town. They do them on different campuses, it rotates around different campuses, so.
And then certainly volunteer time.
Yes, oh, yeah. All of these are volunteer.
Yes, so, does anybody want to serve as KECT delegate, returning to go?
I would enjoy it, but just getting Mr. Pika, you know.
I'm gonna serve as, I'm gonna be the alternate. Okay. Does that mean I go or not go?
Well, you better go, let's see.
Typically, I mean, it kind of depended. Ken was the alternate for, Ron was the delegate for quite a few years, because he moved up through the officer ranks, and Ken would go sometimes, and sometimes he wasn't able to go. So as the alternate, you can go, you just aren't the voting person. So you're there, and you observe, and you participate in conversations, but it's, there's only one delegate for each institution that actually does the voting, so that's fun. Yeah.
And that's the only way you're gonna get paid, really.
Yeah, sure. Promise is promise.
It's in kind. All right, good. We've got Julie and Martha on that. How about Board Finance Committee designees? Do you wanna explain that?
I will. The vice chair serves as the permanent, one of the permanent positions on finance committee, and so then, we need another person that would be interested in serving. Those meetings are open, so anybody can come. And again, it's just that when that finance committee meets, the designees are the ones that are really kind of directly involved in the conversation, the ones that bring the report back to the board. That's really the way that it's, you know, that it's played out over time, but as the vice chair, Lance serves in one of those positions automatically with his vice chair position.
And those usually are held an hour before our regular meetings?
I'd like to give it.
Okay. Yep. And that one didn't pay.
That's the pay. Did I miss it there?
Okay. Foundation Board liaison, do we have somebody still in that?
I'm on the foundation.
Okay.
Okay. You wanna do that?
All right.
Is that a one-person? Yes.
Yes.
And as a liaison, it's a non-voting, it's pick-in, really, just kind of facilitator of information between the foundation board meetings and the college board, you know, a report, you know, if there's, if there's information to share from the foundation board on a monthly basis, you do that.
And the same is true with EFAB. Basically, this is a board that takes care of the state. That's the best way to put it. We deal with things, you know, about, we gotta replace the track, where's the money gonna come from, talk about the boxes and, you know, the scoreboard, and where we get our advertising dollars from, and...
That's a mission.
Right.
Tell me, are the entities on the stadium board now?
The city, the school district, and the college, and then there's one member at large. Each of those entities has two members, two representatives, and then there's a member at large that's chosen by the six board members that are on the board.
Doesn't the council have to tell them to, or not?
No. No, it was all, it was all built and funded through those three partners. Maybe, the original conversations may be...
Yeah. You wanna do that? I'll probably stay on it, too. It's very interesting. I've learned a lot about it that I didn't know anything about.
Lance is served as the alternate, you wanna stay the alternate?
Yeah, as long as you guys keep showing up.
You can sleep there.
So Lance, alternate?
Yeah. And we'll get you the schedule, the first meeting's scheduled for February, and typically during the sports activities seasons is when EFABC meets, pretty much monthly, but then when, you know, when it's off-season, you know.
I still have all my orientation stuff on that, Doug, so I'll try to find...
Oh, we're gonna give them stuff.
Are you gonna give it to me?
Yeah, we've updated it, so.
So it's better than what I have?
Yeah, we're gonna give you updated stuff.
Okay, that'd be good. All right, Capitol Projects team, see, Ken was on that one.
Ken and Ron both were. That Capitol Projects team has not met very regularly. Its charter is really to help facilitate discussion and review of major Capitol projects. And so... and so it's not, it's not a team that's involved in smaller projects and smaller decisions that, for instance, if facilities need to replace carpet and those kinds of things, it's not that, but it would be if there's a major, right now, the charter identifies major renovation or construction projects, you'd be involved in that discussion and, you know, helping review RFPs, you know, we were putting things out for bid for, you know, for stuff like that, so, but I think it's.
Julie?
I think.
She's on.
Okay, and I think it's important to have also, maybe.
Yeah, that'd be good, chill.
I'm, I was just thinking, I mean, again, anybody can come, but I think it's probably important that we have maybe one of the existing board members be part of that, potentially, a new one and a, an existing one, maybe, but again, the meetings are open, so you can come, that, that would just be.
I would encourage you to come.
I'm not, I'm not construction bound, but I certainly have written an awful lot of bid proposals and also facilitated a lot of bids incoming and.
Bryce, do I?
Yeah, but that helps. That helps.
I would, I would circle some.
Okay.
And we'll, you know, we'll keep you posted, again, we don't have any things scheduled at this point in time. Oh, that's all done, yeah, oh yeah, it's all done, we're on the tail end of, just finishing that project.
Okay, well, that's all the committees.
Okay, you have them all, you have them all?
Yep.
Okay, we're ready for standing reports.
All right, so we're standing, so hopefully we have some people left, Gabby for Student Government Association report?
I think I made a report somewhere.
You gonna be Gabby?
I am.
Super, everything is super.
Well, go on to somebody else real quick and I'll send.
Oh, retreat on Thursday, okay, I know it's stacked in or something.
Well, that was a very comprehensive report.
It'll be a super retreat.
We're gonna move on to the operational staff report. Sam?
She's not here, it was on that same email, but they are getting ready for ACOG and it's April first and second here at Butler, which is the Association of Kansas Community College Office Professionals, and they're having a two-day conference here at Butler, April first and second, and so they're just kind of in the planning stages for that.
Okay, professional employees, I do, I did see, Terry, there he is.
Why couldn't I get in on that? For the new board members, my name is Dr. Terry Sater, and I will be coming in front of you every month in my capacity as president of the Professional Employees Association. It's both appropriate and practical for President Cole, Vice Presidents, and Deans to talk about the accomplishments and services of individual faculty members, I report on just general faculty and advisor concerns as they come up. Not much going on quite yet, other than we are getting ready to do, at least faculty are getting ready to do, what we really want to do, and that is be in the classroom with our students, that's always a happy time for us, of course, advisors have been, as usual, busy as all hell, and we like it that way. The one other announcement that I would make, yesterday at our opening Professional Development Days meeting, it was announced that Robert Carlson, Professor Robert Carlson of chemistry is our new master teacher.
Oh, wonderful.
The master teacher award is a significant honor that we still on the best of the best among us every year, and we're very proud and happy to see that Professor Carlson is chosen this year, he wasn't able to make it tonight, maybe I'll try to get him to come in February, but if you see Robert around, please congratulate him, he's an credit to the institution, longtime faculty member, and couldn't be happier with this year's master teacher.
Who votes on that?
Huh?
Who votes on that, all the faculty?
The Professional Employees Association has a master teacher committee that determines among those nominations provided, maybe less than.
So it's just that committee that votes on them?
Yes.
Now, is that name then turned into the Chamber of Commerce for Teacher of the Year for the College in August too, or not, or is that a gift?
We don't do that award, we don't do those kinds of awards anymore.
Okay.
No, that, we haven't done that for a couple of years, change.
This was originally tied in with the master teacher awards through Emporia State University, and originally those award, local award recipients then were in the running for state recognition as well, so. Thank you, Terry. Board Finance Committee report? Like, yeah, you, you got anything to say?
Uh, revenue spending, they're well known, and we're, 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 I know we're gonna talk about the audit after, but just a couple of things on there, we're really clean on it, so it's obviously always good news, but we know findings on the federal.
Financial aid.
Financial aid stuff, which is just impressive in itself, the, we talked about a little bit last time, but there was a little bit of a delay in getting it completed, primarily driven by some of that, the new testing was backed up from June to September, and so they were just delaying getting some of that information, and then if you remember last week, there were some issues with some states regarding the pre-retirement healthcare, it had to be kind of reconciled and restated, which brought down liability number. But that's the benefits of. Of that.
Okay, thank you, Lance. Foundation Board report?
No report, Foundation Board meets, I think, next week or the following week, sometime coming up here, couple of weeks, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna make you say more than that for president.
I have a little bit more for that, we completed orientation on the third of January, I'll connect with Julie to spend just a little bit more time with, with her, catch her up on a couple of conversations that, with her schedule that she missed, start of the semester, again, classes start next Tuesday, and faculty are back this week, obviously, for P D D and all kinds of activities, Professional Development Days, all kinds of activities this week, please think about whether next Wednesday night, you can attend the men's home basketball game, halftime of the men's basketball game, we're playing Neo Show, halftime of the men's basketball game, we're gonna honor the student athletes that have grade point averages of three point oh?
Three point five.
Three point five, and the floor will be filled, it's a pretty impressive, we just call their names, recognize the, they come out by teams and stuff, but we call them individually by name, shake their hands, line them up on the floor and stuff, but, you know, some outstanding student athletes that are academically outstanding, so, men's game starts at seven thirty, halftime will be a little bit after eight, eight, eight fifteen, no charge for you to come in, come and watch the, the game, it'll be fun to be part of the power plant in the home game, I have for you, or I think, maybe, did Laura, you pass out these?
There it is.
Okay, at your places, the foundation event that's on February sixth, you have a flyer in front of you, six to seven thirty PM is a phenomenal opportunity to, I have an extra copy if you don't have one, Julie, phenomenal opportunity to have a master flautist on campus, also, this man is, says encyclopedic knowledge of the history of jazz and the civil rights movement, this is being sponsored by the Black Student Association, Student Government, and through the foundation, we have a Harold Smith Lecture Series, and so these three entities are coming together to invite this man to campus to play for us, I'm sure, and entertain and help us learn some things that we just don't know about, so I'd really encourage you to come, I know folks from across the college are being invited, they're inviting area schools, and, you know, I think really reaching out to folks to make sure everybody has an opportunity to know that he's gonna be on campus and, and hear what, what he has to share with us, so I think it'll be a really, really interesting evening and really enriching.
Is that just downstairs?
Yes, in the Clifford Stone Room, uh huh, and then I also, I didn't get these passed out, but you had asked during orientation for information on life enrichment, and so Tricia Walls put this together for me and emailed it to me, this just, this handout shows a little bit about the life enrichment programs that, again, are sponsored through the foundation, that are open to our service, well, seniors really can come from anywhere if they want to, we really promote it within our service area, but it shows the list of programs that have been presented, the average attendance over the last couple of years, and then a little bit about where they've come from, majority come from Augusta and El Dorado, but you can see how the attendance has grown over the last couple of years and really have some great programs, and again, these are open to anybody as well, so, you know, if you're, if you're available and you wanna be included on Tricia's email list to have notices about the events, send Laura a little message and let her know, 'cause we'll get you on the, on the email list, but just wanted to share that information with you, too, I answer questions if you have any.
Okay, moving on to education facilities, the board here before, we have a meeting in the background?
No, the next meeting will be in February, we worked on updating the orientation manuals because we'll have new person from the college, new person from the city, I think even a new person maybe from the school district coming on, so we'll have some new folks coming on, so we've just been working on making sure we have all those documents pulled together, we've got a couple of policy updates that the administrators will be talking about when we meet, that we'll probably bring to EFABC either in February or March to look at, we need to update and renew our MOU with Great Western Dining before the fall season starts and just some things like that, so.
Okay, monitoring reports, if none noted, board strategic discussion, the issues and opportunities, none noted, so we move on to the board action items, the first one being approval of the June thirtieth audit report. I'm gonna turn the floor over to somebody else.
So Kent and Kim, you have, you wanna share some information?
So as Lance reported from the Finance Committee, VKD was at the meeting today.
Did you have the microphone on?
Yeah, mic turned on.
Okay.
To discuss the final audit and the financial statements with the Finance Committee, just want to point out, VKD, VKD did a wonderful job, they have been so thorough the last couple of years, we've cleaned up our financial statements a lot, so we appreciate that with them, but like Lance said, we had a clean audit, we did have an issue with our OPEB liability, which is the post-employment benefits liability, but we have that cleaned up now and it should be good moving forward, so, any questions from anybody about the audit, I think we just need you guys to accept it, so now that it's final, so.
Does anybody have any questions?
The recommendations, were they, are they desolative, I can't find it right now, but are there recommendations? From VKD?
Yes, you can read at the management letter, and it'll talk about any findings at the back, there weren't any specific findings, there was one deficiency that had to do with the OPEB.
Yes.
Liability, and like I said, we've got that taken care of now, and actually just to point out another tremendous item on this is our federal aid program that has to have its audit done every year, we didn't have any findings at all on that, so, that's a pretty significant accomplishment for the college, too, so, student financial aid does a really good job with that, so.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to accept the college's audit report for the period ending June thirtieth of twenty nineteen? Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries, move on to the approval of the NRP with Augusta.
On page seven of your board book, you'll find the information that starts on the Augusta Neighborhood Revitalization Program, we, this is a renewal of an existing program that's been in place with Augusta for a number of years, we've got NRP's with El Dorado and Andover and Rose Hill currently, we've had it in the past with Benton and Douglas, I think, but those have expired. Everybody familiar with NRP's, anybody have questions about them, do you, do you know about them at all? Well, and I won't be able to explain all the details, but essentially what NRP's, the purpose of an NRP is to allow communities to identify zones or areas within their community where they wanna revitalize, or they wanna rejuvenate, or they want to, to create tax, tax rebates potentially on new construction, every community's NRP is a little bit different, there's, you know, there's kind of a boilerplate from this state, but you can create some of your own unique pieces within that NRP, and basically what it does is rebate, if you revitalize or if you build commercial residential, what, what it, the NRP does is rebate you tax dollars based on the increased value, the increased assessed value with that renovation or revitalization or, or build, so, property owner still has to pay their, their property taxes, but if they increase the value of their property through these changes, then that's what, that's what apply, what the rebate is applied to, is that increased valuation, assessed valuation, and so the guidelines that they put in here, that Augusta has put in here, identify that for infield residential development and new construction in residential subdivision, the, the financial caps on appraised value increases can be from two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand, so if your appraised value goes up five hundred thousand dollars, then, then your rebate would be applied to that change in, in valuation, and so, they, they made a few changes between their last NRP and this one, they've identified some areas downtown that they want to try to impact and address, to revitalize some of the downtown area, but again, the, you know, the details are all within the, the NRP, it has to be approved by the school district, by the county, by the city, and by the college, because we're all taxing entities within, within Butler County that this applies to, so, we typically have always approved these, it's, there's benefit to doing it because it increases the, you know, the valuation of property and ultimately increases, you know, the, the dollars that are part of property tax value, so.
A lot of the remodel contractors in Augusta, there's, there's a lot of, hmm, houses that should be bulldozed, they're not worth, I mean, very low rent, but appraised for next to nothing in the county, so it makes it affordable, I, I do it occasionally, for us, you either buy it, bulldoze it, or buy it, pull the permit, so it's worth ten grand now, and when it's old, sixty, so you get ten years, even if you sell it, the person that buys it gets ten years rebate on the taxes, and then they pay on the sixty dollar. Without that incentive, like.
It helps with the light ones.
It does, yeah.
It helps save the gamble of your problems.
Yeah, it's kind of the idea behind it, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, so I would, I would, I know it's been to, I was past the county, it goes to the school district, I think, next month, and I think the city has approved it as well, so, anyway, I would, I would recommend that we approve it, and I can let Cody Sims know tomorrow that, if that, if that's the case.
Does he might have any other questions, Ken, about some, a, a NRP? Okay, do you have a motion to approve the request of the City of? Okay, do you have a motion to approve the request of the City of Augusta entering to enter local agreement with the city, Butler County Board of Commissioners, and USD four oh two?
Some move?
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, we now have the approval of sick leave policy revision.
Yes, it's Shelby. From time to time, I'll bring recommendations for policy revisions or additions to policies, or sometimes removal of some old language in a policy. And that is what I'm bringing forward to you today on our sick leave policy. And in 2018, the board was presented with a proposition to reduce the number of contracted employees that we have on, here at Butler, primarily in our operational and institutional support areas. Faculty and professional employees all remain under contract law. However, that particular group of people, we wanted to be able to administer the employment at will statute for those groups of folks, so we eliminated the need for contracts and went and formed an at will for those salaried individuals and hourly individuals that were previously contracted employees with the college. That was a lot less signing that you all had to do every year when we removed contracts. However, one of the things that was a provision in our sick leave policy was that contracted employees, once they had exhausted any, all of their sick leave in a particular contract year, they could be given half of their salary for the remainder of that contract as per the sick leave policy. So since we are no longer issuing contracts for administrative institutional support employees, that verbiage is no longer applicable. So I'm requesting of the board that it be approved for us to remove that language from this policy.
Do you have any questions, Shelby? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the proposed policy revisions on sick leave? Some move? Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to?
I know this covers acknowledging payment of a lot of bills, per se. And I have asked for a monthly pronoun of all things paid expense-wise. And I was wondering if I might be able to get that on Monday? Where I could see not only the checks issued, but any expenses turned in, people are still.
You'll get a document each month, the board trustees get a document each month of the expenditures. They'll get an email to you. When does that, Kim, when does that come out from Syria? That expenditure?
It would be on the second of her day after the first day.
Yeah, so you'll start to get an email that has those expenditures on it.
It's pretty detailed, too. It says what department it was.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's really good.
Do you have a, do you, can you, I'm gonna make a note that I would like to have a chance, even though I wasn't.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any other issues with the consent agenda? If there being none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I stand move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Need for any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Even cover something.
Yep, supplemental information starts on fifty-nine. Really no changes in the report from last month on key performance indicators and the board regions' performance agreement outcomes. There are some progress reports, again, reports that are included, starting on page sixty, on specific priorities for our strategic plan. You'll see these every month, and they, they address different things, different priorities. We kind of have a reporting schedule set up, so you'll see some different things each month. But this just gives you an idea of some of the different priorities and the progress that we're being, that we're making, or action items that are still in front of people. So you can certainly read through those, and, you know, if you've got questions about it, be sure and let me know. Statement of revenues and expenditures is on page sixty-six. And then the board calendar starts on sixty-nine. I know Laura has some things. Go ahead. Laura, she's got a lot of things.
I see. On the calendar, you'll see the Andover Annual Chamber Dinner, which has been scheduled for January twenty-third at six o'clock. We also have the Augusta Annual Dinner, which is January twenty-fifth at six thirty. And the El Dorado Annual Dinner, which is February twentieth at six. And we buy a table, the college buys a table, and then we'll invite you to attend any, all that you want to attend. I will send an email tomorrow. I just wanted to give you a heads up that it's coming. Because for the Augusta and the Andover dinners, I'm gonna need reservations by Friday, because if what the trustees don't fill, we'll fill with administration of the college.
How many the time again?
Andover is Thursday the twenty-third at six.
Where?
Uh, Teradyne, can't you click that? Yeah, that. The Augusta dinner is not on there, and that's January twenty-fifth at six thirty.
It's usually the point. Is it the point again?
Yeah.
What day of the week?
That is a Saturday.
And that was, I'm sorry, Augusta?
Yes.
Trustee spouse thing, or just trustees showing up?
It could be a trustee spouse thing. We have a table of eight, and so we kind of do first numbers for, you know, so.
I'd like to tip both of us.
And El Dorado is February twentieth. That one had a little bit more of the way, but the more we know, the better for us.
El Dorado is when?
February twentieth, which I think is the third stage.
Typically, what we've kind of done in the past is really try to make sure, like the, if the, like the Augusta dinner, Shelby, if you and Heather wanna go, because it's in Augusta, that makes sense. El Dorado, maybe it's, you know, more the, the folks that represent kind of the El Dorado area. But, but that doesn't have to be that way. So we just wanna make sure that we have a full table. We don't wanna buy a table and have two people there, so we want a full table. And need enough kind of notice that we can make sure we've got the right people at the table. We need, we want people there that are gonna engage and visit with folks and be great representatives of the college and stuff, so.
And I'm actually glad you're going with the Augusta unit.
So.
I would like to know if there's any for me, and of course, the Andover one's the district. Now, I was wondering about what's held.
They don't do an annual dinner. We don't have a annual chamber dinner that we get invited to.
They've never been invited. We, we do the chamber mixers. The academies are a part of those.
Yeah, they, they do have a dinner. So I'll, I'll see if I can figure out when that is. Annual.
Yes, they do have mixers.
Well, there was a dinner in the fall that, that I attended.
Fall, okay. Yeah, I didn't know.
At, and it was at Rose Hill High School, but.
That's right.
Because.
Yeah, I remember that. Okay, yeah, you're right, it's in the fall.
It didn't seem to, I've been to the other chamber dinners. I, it wasn't what I thought it was going to be. But I did, I've never been to.
At least you went.
No, I, I just mean, I didn't know if it was a chamber dinner or just a mixer. I wasn't sure.
Um, I know there's a mixer on Thursday, so.
We have our director of Rose Hills going on that on Thursday.
What's that?
The director of Rose Hill Academy will be there. Andrea Gargan on Thursday. Maria Glens coming. She will be in present there.
I'm trying to figure out how I can attend this, is what I'm trying to say.
We always have at least one of the representatives from the academy at those in Rose Hill, so.
Right, and I'm trying to figure out how I can legally attend those, since I'm not a member of the chamber. Do I need to be a, what do they call that? An upper-class board member, you know? February board meeting, mark your calendars, will be in Andover. At the five thousand building, will be in the Grizzly Den, which is, if you, if you come through the student union entrance, Laura will send you all the information, address, all that sort of stuff. If you come through the student union entrance, the Grizzly Den is directly to your left, so you'll be able to find it easily. Want to do a tour of the building ahead of the meeting? And so we'll nail down that time for sure. Maybe three o'clock, I don't know for sure. We'll get it, we'll get it figured out with Ireland and Lynn and, and those guys. But it'll be fun to take you back through that building and show you what's being done over there.
Kim, you want maybe, I have a finance.
We'll talk about that. We'll get that figured out and see. We may, we may eliminate that just so we can have enough time for the tour and for questions and things like that. So, I'll, we'll visit about that, okay? And then let you know. What else, Laura? Anything else?
Well, we are taking pictures at the board meetings. It'll be group and individual shots of all of the trustees, and those are at four fifteen.
Okay, that's right.
So definitely be there by four fifteen at the Grizzly Den.
We'll be back from our tour in time for pictures. The picture gets posted on the website. I think the individual pictures are on the website, too, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your, your districts and how they're doing such a good.
Yeah. Okay, and I think then we have a work session coming up.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign? We are adjourned.